All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191 or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838 and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713 or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122 or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com.
Good evening. Welcome, am I on? Hi, welcome to this special Greenfield Town Council meeting on Halloween Eve, October 30th, 7:00 PM, GCTV. This meeting is being recorded and videotaped. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Oh, they're recorder. Thank you. Roll call of members.
Counselor Sun.
Here.
Counselor Lobek.
Here.
Counselor Alice.
Present.
Counselor Pfeiffer.
Here.
Counselor Dolan.
Present.
Counselor Gilmore.
Here.
Counselor Wheeler.
Here.
Counselor Mayo.
Here.
Counselor Lenovich. Counselor Matz.
Present.
President Reno.
Here.
Vice President Ricketts.
Here.
Counselor Stempel, he's not here. Madam Corrigan, Madam President.
Madam Corrigan.
Madam President.
So do we have a motion to suspend the rules of procedure?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? All right. So who wants to read the motion on the table? Rickett, Counselor Alice.
Sorry, I forgot my agenda.
Vice President Ricketts.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council pursue it to section 5-11, appoint the firm of Blum Shapiro for the purpose of an outside audit and send the mayor cost estimate of $50,000 to $52,000 previously voted by the town council on August 50, 2018 and vetoed by the mayor on October 12, 2018 is hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded and I guess we'll start the discussion. Counselor Alice.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So just to be clear on this, voting in favor of this overrides the veto and voting against it does not override the veto. I just want to be clear that when we're talking, how the vote is going to affect, how you vote affects what we're trying to talk about. So this, this motion was, was vetoed, of course, as we know. I am of the belief that this motion was not even able to be vetoed because it's an internal working of the council. I believe that the charter, the spirit of the charter under section 511 gives the council the ability to do an outside audit for the purpose of being completely separate from the executive side. I asked six questions and the responses are here. I think everyone got a copy, is that correct, of those responses from, from council. I've just briefly been able to read them because I've got them just tonight when I got here. I think the most, the most important one to refer to would be the answer from council under number four. The question was worded a little, I believe I was writing the questions in a hurry and the question wasn't exactly in a format that was totally understandable. The question was, what provision in the charter authorizes the mayor to hire an audit firm under charter section 15? If not, is it your opinion that the mayor has, under some other provision in the charter, the ability to hire an auditing firm? If so, is it your opinion that the independent audit is not the same as the city audit? And if so, why? And the response was very short and very concise. In my opinion, no provision in the charter, including section 511, explicitly provides the mayor with the authority to hire an audit firm to audit the books and accounts of the town. So this, to me, as I read it, states that there's no authority for the mayor to do any audit of the books and that the audit is solely the, at the purview and the requirement of the city council to do. That being said, if you look, we as a council authorized, approved at our annual budget meeting, money for a city audit, which is money that we should have been able to use to do a city audit. So with all of that said, I believe that the veto is not even allowed under the charter. We shouldn't even have to vote on a veto because it never should have been sent to the mayor because it was not an order that was subject to veto powers. I'll hold off on my, the rest of my comments there, but thank you for letting me begin.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Counselor Mas? Is my mic on?
I don't know if my mic's on or not, but I'll try to speak up so councilors in the public can hear. I tend to agree with Counselor Alice that this is a measure that should not be subject to veto, that it is an internal function of the council. As you know, the legal opinion clearly says exempted from veto are internal functions of the council. And to find out whether or not it's an internal function of the council, all you need to do is look at the wording of 5-11 of the charter. It says, "The town council shall and shall," meaning we must do it, "annually provide for an outside audit of the books and accounts of the town to be made by a certified public accountant or firm certified public accountants who have no personal interest direct or indirect in the fiscal affairs of the town or any of its officers." "The mayor shall provide to the town council some money sufficient for the, to satisfy the cost estimated for conducting the audit as presented to the mayor in writing by the town council. The award of the contract audit shall be made by the town council on or before the 17th and 15th of each year. The town council shall coordinate the work of the individual or firm selected with the municipal officials. The report of the audit shall be filed in its final form with the town council, no later than March of the following year, the year following its award." The only role of the executive in this audit is, it requires the mayor to provide funding, which, under state law, only the executive can submit funding for this form of government that we don't have. When I was on the 27 member council, we could add money into the budget in areas other than the schools. That is not permissible under state law. So the charter correctly identifies the mayor as being required to provide the funding for this function. The, the rest of it, it is coordinated by the council and it is, the final report is filed with the council. There is coordination with executives, but that, with the other, other parts of the town, but that can be done through either 2-7, our right to information, or 2-8, the appointment of our, an auditor for post-audit functions. This is our obligation and we, it says we shall do it, we must, it's required. You heard from Counselor Alice that there's no capability of doing it absent our, our appointment of an auditor. So the money can't, at least legally, be appropriated, be spent out of the appropriation without our approval. And finally, I think it's the right thing to do and I think that's the most important reason why we should override this veto. I have concerns over what has happened with, when you go through two financial directors in two years, there's something wrong. When there, there's something wrong. I don't know what it is. And the mayor has made some accusations related to the former finance director and she has made her own representations. I don't know who's right and I don't know who's wrong. And, but, I'd like to know, on behalf of the citizens of Greenfield, I'd like to find out what the truth is. I think we have an obligation to make sure that money is being managed appropriately in this town. And I hope that the audit comes, that our audit comes back with no significant findings. That's, that's what we should all hope for. I don't think that that outside audit can be a truly independent audit if it's done by the same firm that has had a relationship for over a decade with the town. Not saying that that firm is not a good firm or they can't do anything in the future. But all of the arguments that have been made for why this is burdensome are exactly the reasons why it should be done. The fact that it's suggested that this is particularly difficult for any of our departments is suspicious to me. The fact is, an audit should be equally burdensome, no matter who does it. That's the whole point, is that you're looking under the hood and under, under, making sure everyone's doing it. If auditors are going back to what they've done in previous years and using those as the basis for their opinions, they're not really fully doing their job. They are not doing an independent search each time. I like to think about this as checking each step along the way. Can you take shortcuts in an audit? Probably. But I think it's incumbent on us at a time when we've lost two financial directors and we've just appointed a third who I'm sure will have an opportunity to meet. It is important for that new person to step off with a clean acknowledgement that everything is, is good for going forward so that we can start from a place where everyone trusts the books, trusts the numbers, and our deliberations on policy aren't based on suspicions about what may or may not be true factually about finances. We can talk about policy. And I would ask that everyone, even though I don't think that this is subject to a veto, I think it's incumbent on us to put this to bed and override the veto and I'd ask that we do it tonight. Last thing is, it is not, this is not, I don't say this without the belief that this is the only action which is not subject to veto. Today, we received a veto from the mayor on another internal function of the council and that's the creation ad hoc committee of this council, which clearly the mayor has no authority to veto. I certainly understand why the mayor might want to veto some of these things, but I think it's upon us to make sure that we retain the power, the power of this town council because what we do tonight is not just about what, what we think, right? Particularly about the books this year. I think it's the right thing for the books this year, but it is also important because it sets precedent going forward for whether or not the council has the power over auditors. And clearly, the charter intends us to. Thank you.
Counselor Gilmore?
I'd just like to ask if someone can explain to me how the other auditing firm was chosen.
I wasn't here for that town council meeting, so. Counselor Alice?
Are you asking how the one that is currently being used audit the books or the one in the motion?
The new one.
The new one in the motion. I think Counselor Mas could.
Counselor Mas?
So I called to a number of firms looking for, looking for information. Blum Shapiro is a highly regarded firm that had, does municipal finance in, in Massachusetts. I had an opportunity to speak to the head of, they have a lot of staff, they're capable of doing this work. I had an opportunity to speak to the head of their government auditing department because they also do business and, and other nonprofit auditing. I talked to them about the transitions that we were going through, the scope of work that I anticipated would be necessary. I talked to them about the charter provisions, what their interpretations of the charter were, and they were able to provide me with a quote of, of $50,000 to $52,000, which was very close to what had been appropriated. It is my belief that it made sense not to be choosing, when looking to choose a auditing firm that we chose, we would choose one that didn't have local ties, that was truly outside. That was my hope. And my hope was that we'd get a clean look and be able to start all over with a process. It is not the ideal process to pick. I think interim director Kelly outlined an excellent process for us to follow going forward, but I also, I really acted quickly on this in looking at the situation after the firing of the financial director and, and looking at what our roles and responsibilities were in response to that. I was not present, as you know, for the special, the special meeting that was called in relationship to that. But I did feel some concerns related to that and I, looking at the charter to see what we could do, took those actions and probably would have thought, done a much more deliberative process had we not had to act quickly by September 15th and that's why I put the motion forward with the firm that was responsive to me.
Counselor Dolan?
I'm in agreement that the charter language is pretty clear, that it's incumbent upon the council to do this audit. My question for my colleagues, as somebody relatively new on the council, is, has this audit ever been done before? In other words, has Melanson and Heath been doing the council's audit and the town's audit or just the town's audit?
Counselor Alice, you want to answer that?
So I can, I can speak a little bit to that. Melanson and Heath has been doing an audit for the town since we changed government, so over, I think, 14 years. However, I was always under the assumption and impression, and every time the question was asked, that the independent audit was a different audit than the city audit that we continually had every year, which now I'm finding out was incorrect information that I was receiving. And in fact, in the letter that we got from council, it states that that money that's been spent every year, actually, there's no authority to spend for that purpose. Every year that it's been, that it has happened. And specifically, over the past, well, 14 years, because I've been on the council that whole time, since before the government changed, we were, we were never led to believe that that money was the money that we were supposed to be using for the independent audit. And it was always my belief, from what I was told from the executive side and the folks, going back even before this mayor, it had been told to me, or I had believed that what was going on was that there was two separate audits and the council never decided to use the power to have an independent audit. Now we're finding out that this audit that's been happening every year is actually money being spent that is not, there's no authorization to spend. So that's another conundrum that I find myself in because we had a duty to do something under the charter and I thought that that duty was over and above a duty that was happening. Does that make sense? I believed that the city audit was a different audit than the independent audit the council's supposed to do under chapter 5-11. Turns out that it's not, it was the same audit and that money every year that was expended was expended without the authorization of the council. So it turns out that it is a function of this council to do it and that we are, it's incumbent on us to do it. If we don't do it, we're going back to doing something that there's no authorization to do. So we have, we're almost, we're almost between a rock and a hard place where we actually just have to do it. There's no other option.
Vice President Ricketts?
So I just want to be clear about one thing. And so, in the 14 years that this has occurred, no council in the 14 years has ever asked for the independent audit specifically. So am I correct in assuming that this is the first time that a council is actually pushing for this to happen? That in the past, you may not have been the only counselor who assumes something because no other council member in 14 years has asked or received this as well, correct?
I believe that's correct. Unless you have a different recollection?
I was, I was very specifically led to believe, from the executive side, that, that money was theirs to spend on an audit, which I am now finding out, for the first time, it's not.
Okay, so that's not, that wasn't my question. Do you understand my question?
I understand your question.
Thank you.
And, and the answer is, I think you're answering a different question, but the answer is, and that will actually lead me to what I wanted to say, it's a good segue, that it is, I mean, I've only been on the council since 2011, but nobody's, nobody's utilized this, but, you know, knowing contracts and utilizing contracts, when, when we're in dealing with a bargaining unit, if a past practice, you know, say, somebody in the bargaining unit, Counselor Mayo, I know you'll love this talk. So if somebody is, if somebody is getting free sodas and, who works for the school system and they've been getting them forever, but in the contract it clearly states that school employees are not to get free sodas, when that school employee gets called out on it, they can't say, "Well, I've been doing it forever" because the contract clearly states that you're not supposed to get free school soda. And I feel like, you know, we haven't been utilizing section 5-11, but that, you know, is no one's fault, but I think now that we know about it, now that, that we're aware of it, and it's already been voted on, I think it's incumbent upon us to stick with what the vote was. Also seeing since, I mean, there's a couple of things I wanted to say about this. I do think it sets a bad precedent and this, I didn't ask Kathy, I didn't have time today, but of my recollection since the summertime, this is the third veto that we've received from the mayor. Of the three vetoes, I was spoken to indirectly about one, and that was this one here. I don't think that's functional and I don't think it's respectful. I think as the, as the presiding officer of the town council, I should at least be given a heads up before, especially, I got two vetoes on two motions I personally made. Got no discussion, no phone call, nothing. I read about it in the paper like everybody else. Or I, if I read it in my emails, I read it in my emails. This was the only one that I was given a moderate heads up about. And I think that alone is dysfunctional. That's not good communication and it's, me as the presiding officer should have a chance to talk to the mayor about this, talk to my fellow counselors before the veto comes out and get a sense of where everybody is at. So for that reason alone, I do feel this is a misuse of the mayor's power and I do ask for my fellow counselors to say no. Well, actually, no, say yes. Say yes, but say you can't do vetoes this way and whether you like it or not, you have to start working with us and talking to us about these things. And that starts with talking with me. So that was a segue into that. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Counselor Sun?
If you're gonna do something, you gotta do it right in the first place. You know, you can't, you gotta let, like, let you know because you're head of the town council instead of just going through and doing what, what the person wants. Like the example you did, made. You can't just, just because you've been getting soda all, you know, free for, you know, for a long time, doesn't mean to continue it, even if you get caught doing it. Because you're, you're spending, you're saying, "No, you can't use this money that's there." And it's not for just a free-for-all. It's for the right, you know, we wanted audit, he vetoes it and says, "Okay, I'm in charge. I don't have to answer to any, anybody. We're here for the town, the whole town, not just part of it."
Counselor Gilmore?
I move if we call the question.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained? Okay, the question's been called. Let's do a roll call vote.
So.
Do you want me to clarify?
Just for everyone's.
So the motion is that the Greenfield Town Council pursue into section 5-11, appoint the firm of Blum Shapiro for the purpose of an outside audit and send the mayor cost estimate of $50,000 to $52,000 previously voted on by the town council on August 15, 2018 and vetoed by the mayor on August 12, 2018 is hereby approved. So a yes vote overrides the veto, a no vote upholds the mayor's veto.
Counselor Sun?
Yes.
Counselor Lobek?
Yes.
Counselor Alice?
Yes.
Counselor Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Mas?
Yes.
Vice President Ricketts?
No.
Vice President choose to vote?
Yes.
Is that your vote?
Yes.
So the motion stands and the veto is overturned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained?
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by, providing the care you and your family need when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191 or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838 and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713 or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.